The Planning Commission back to order. And before we move into our next two docketed items, commissioners, we will need a motion to remove these from the table, which is docket PZ 16011 and PZ 16012. We tabled these two docketed items last month, and we did not start the hearing, so we'll be starting at the beginning of the hearing process on these two docketed items. But I need a motion to remove them from the table.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Horton moves to remove them from the table. We have a second?
Multiple seconds.
Okay, multiple seconds. Mr. Faalvi. All right, with that, it's non-debatable, non-amendable. Comes to immediate vote. All those in favor of removing docket PZ 16011 and PZ 16012 from the table for discussion, back onto the table for discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay. Motion to remove from the table has been approved. With that, Ms. Beeman, I assume you're going to introduce the dockets. Well, let me ask Ms. Fox first to read the dockets, please. Both of them.
Docket PZ 16-011. Application has been filed by Randall and Dean, LLC, for the approval of a zoning map amendment on approximately 0.25 acres. The property is located at 203 East Washington Street, LaGrange. The proposed change is from R4 residential to CN Commercial Neighborhood District, deferred from April 26, 2016. Docket PZ 16-012. Application has been filed by Randall and Dean, LLC, for the approval of a development plan for approximately 0.25 acres. The applicant is also requesting a waiver of section 280-070, parking waiver. The property is located at 203 Washington Street, LaGrange. The property zoning is CN Commercial Neighborhood District, deferred from April 26, 2016.
All right, thank you. And with that, now I'll ask Ms. Beeman if she will introduce the docket, please.
Good morning. Brooke Beeman with Oldham County Planning and Development. As Ms. Fox stated, the applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment on approximately 0.246 acres. The proposed change is from R4 residential to CN Commercial Neighborhood. The applicant is also requesting a parking waiver as well. It is, the existing zoning is R4. The proposed zoning is CN Commercial Neighborhood, and this is located in the historic district of LaGrange. This is an aerial view of the site. As you can see, the site in question is circled around in red. And it's a corner lot on the corner of South Walnut and East Washington Street. This is an area view. The structures are in gray, and the hash area are the drives. And this is the current area zoning. As you can see, the proposed location is currently zoned R4. There is R4 existing to the north and to the east, and then commercial is existing, commercial C1 and C2 and C3 is existing to the west and to the north and south as well. So Division 140 CN Commercial Neighborhood, the intent of this district is to promote the reuse of structures located in urban areas of Oldham County that have been constructed for mixed commercial and residential use, which may be currently underused or vacant, and which are located at street corners or on blocks with a significant number of retail businesses' use. The applicant is requesting a zoning change from R4 residential to CN Commercial. They are proposing to open a retail establishment in the existing historic structure, previously known as the Christmas in Kentucky Store. This was approved as a conditional use for home occupation by the LaGrange Board of Adjustment years ago. The proposed retail shop can be accessed by the existing drive off of East Washington Street. The parking requirements for retail shop, that is 3,285 square feet, is a minimum of 13 and a maximum of 22. There are seven total existing spaces available, four on-street parking spaces in the front along East Washington Street, and three in the drive. So the applicant is requesting a waiver of six parking spaces. This is the development plan. As you can see, it's an existing two-story building. There's an existing carport that's attached to the building, so one space can go under there, and there's about enough room for two spaces in the drive as well. And then there's enough space for at least four spaces in front of the building, which is along East Washington Street. And this is pretty common in the city of LaGrange. There's a lot of on-street parking, and that is permitted. So this is the zoning change sign posted. This is the front of 203 East Washington Street. Here's another view of 203 East Washington Street. As you can see, the existing drive off of East Washington, and then the carport is available for parking as well. Here's another view of the existing structure. There's the east view, looking along East Washington Street. You can see the church is located here, and the majority of the street downwards further east is residential. This is the adjoining property to the east, and this is a single-family residence. This is the west view, looking along East Washington Street. This is the Robert Morris Shrine there, and you can see here, the adjoining property to the west is zoned commercial. There's a dog grooming business that's located there currently. This is the left side yard. So this is looking from this side of the street at the dog salon, back at the property. And this is the north view. This is looking from South Walnut Street towards Main Street. So this is currently standing in the left side yard of the property. And this is the adjoining property to the north, and this is a single-family home as This is the south view, looking back towards South Walnut Street. And this is the adjoining property to the south. You can't see it very well, but it is the Progressive Insurance Building. So in summary, the applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment. The proposed change is from R4 residential to CN Commercial Neighborhood. The applicant is also requesting approval of a development plan with a parking waiver. The parking required, again, is 13 spaces based on the use and the square footage of the building, and the parking provided is seven spaces. So the parking waiver request is six parking spaces. And I can take any questions you may have.
All right. Commissioners, questions? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Bonet, and then Mr. Horton.
Just wanted to clarify, there is no on-street parking on Walnut?
I don't think so. There is, you may be able to see, there's a spot.
I saw one picture where there was a car, but then when I saw the stop sign, it didn't look like they were supposed to.
Yeah, I don't think there's any parking along this street here, but on the other side, there are some spaces. Be able to see. I don't think there's a picture that shows it, but there are some spaces that serve the pampered pup salon. I'm not sure if the applicant has spoken with that business and worked out some kind of parking agreement, but yes, you're correct. There's no parking along this side of the street.
And then my other question, and this, maybe I'm not seeing something, but in Commercial Neighborhood District, they're allowed to utilize a dwelling as residence, and then they're also allowed to use it for a business?
That's correct.
If they can use it at the same time for both, I mean, they could live there and operate a business?
They so choose, yes.
So then my question is, they're quoting the retail spaces, 3,285 square feet. I'm assuming that's the square footage of the entire house?
You'd have to ask the applicant that.
Okay, I'm just wondering if the parking space requirements are being based off of the whole house, if they're really not utilizing the entire house for the retail. That was the purpose of the question.
You'd have to ask the applicant how they intend to use the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Ms. Beeman. Is the applicant the new owner?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And how long is this new owner on the property, if you know?
I'm not sure. That might be a question.
Okay. If, it's operating now, I understand, under conditional use permit. Is that correct?
It's not currently being used as a retail store. I'm not sure when that ceased, but that might be a question for the applicant.
So we don't know if it's being used at all?
At the time that that was approved, technically, and Mr. Urban can correct me if I'm wrong, but we wouldn't approve a home occupation at this point for a retail store. That wouldn't meet our home occupation permit requirements. So they have to come for a zoning change to allow a retail establishment in that particular existing building.
And if this applicant, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, again, I would keep saying, have to ask the applicant. There are a lot of these questions that you need to direct to the applicant on how they intend to use the building.
Okay, well, I'll throw another one at the staff and see if this sticks. If this is approved, and if there's a conditional use on it, will that go away? The conditional use that is apparently currently on it?
Sure, because then it becomes a permitted use, with or without somebody living there.
Okay.
And that was the whole purpose of changing the zoning, so that it could be used without home occupation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. All righty, Mr. Faalvi, and then Mr. Finney.
Could you pull up the zoning map?
Yes.
So places with a commercial all around it then?
There's some R4 to the north.
Turn the mic on, sir.
There's R4, which is residential here, so to the north and to the east.
So north and to the east are residential still?
Yes, yes, sir. And they are currently used as single-family residences.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Ms. Finney.
Yes, Brooke, when you're showing parking spaces five, six, and seven, is there, is this a dead end, or is there through access on that?
On East Washington Street?
Well, on Washington Street, I know there's access.
Are you talking about here, on the carport and a driveway?
Right, now, if you're going from Washington Street, coming through the carport, is there somewhere to go?
No, there is not.
So it is a dead end?
It's a dead end. It's a drive.
It's a driveway.
It's a driveway.
Okay, well, I didn't know if the driveway continued through to another access, alley or whatever to?
No, it does not.
Does not. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions for staff? Okay, seen none. We'll now move into the presentation by the applicant, a representative, and others in support of the application. Mr. Baxter, and we'll, if Ms. Troutman's gonna be, get her sworn in?
You'll probably have questions for us, so, yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Fox, get her sworn in, please.
Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay, from, thanks.
Good morning. My name is Barry Baxter. I'm an attorney here in LaGrange, 117 West Main Street. I represent Randall and Dean, the applicant in this particular situation. Before I forget, couple things. Mr. Horton, you asked a question about how long the applicant has owned the property. The applicant purchased the property from the estate of Linda M. Foster on the 29th day of January this year. So they've owned the property less than a year, okay? Just a few months, in fact. As far as Ms. Bonet's question, before I forget, there will not be anyone residing in the property, so the parking waiver is based upon the entire square footage of the building being calculated for parking spaces. So I wiped out those questions. I think I took care of all the questions at this point. What we've got is, we are asking to have this property rezoned from R4 to CN. I would tell you all that, in my estimation, the R4 zoning classification is not far from CN. It allows low-intensity, non-residential uses. This particular use would not be a conditional use that could be allowed, however, in an R4 zone. I also took some pictures. This is the front of the property. This is the William T. Barber House. For any of you all familiar with the Ghost Tour, apparently this is a haunted house here in LaGrange, so if you all don't approve this application, I think the ghosts may come and see you. So just keep that in mind. It's kinda hard to see on this picture. I tried to get this angle, but you can see the outline. They actually just painted over the existing Christmas in Kentucky Store sign. You can kinda see just below Barber, the C and the K, and that sign was the existing sign for a long period of time in front of this house. The house, the property, is on the National Register. Here is an aerial that I got off of the Internet, and I can draw on the screen, right? The subject property is right in here, so it is difficult to see from the aerial. You can barely make out the rooftop, I think, right in there, but it's difficult to see. And Google shows this property, which is now a pet spa, being a quilt shop. I also noted on the aerial map that you all were shown of the existing zoning, this property is zoned, I believe, R4, but in fact, there is a spa, a hair salon, that's located in that property. So that property is being used commercial as well. In addition, just, and it was noted in Brooke's report, but this is a church just down the street. So there is a lot of mixed use that is going on in the vicinity of this property, which was used as a retail store for a long period of time. How do I clear that? Got it. So this is a picture that I took from the Robert Morris Lodge across the street, or the shrine. Again, this property is the pet salon. This property is a hair salon. I took another picture of the insurance agency behind our property that adjoins us. This is the shrine, catty corner across the street, the church that I spoke of earlier. This is a picture of the parking in front of the subject property. It basically goes the entire way down in front of the residential house that adjoins us next door. There is parking across the street in front of the church and the residence directly across the street. Here's some more views of parking. And Ms. Bonet, I apologize, this also was another question you had. This is actually on-street parking on Walnut, across the street from our property, that is by the pet salon, okay? So there is on-street parking there. There's some on-street parking out in front of the shrine as well. And those views are me, basically, that would've been me standing in the middle of the intersection if I took them, but this is Google Maps. Here is what we are asking the property to be allowed, the zoning change to be. And it shows that in the, this particular section, Division 140, the purpose of the CN Commercial Neighborhood District is to promote the reuse of structures located in urban areas of Oldham County that have been constructed for mixed commercial and residential use, which may be currently underused. Our property right now is not used or vacant, and which is located on a street corner, which we have, or on blocks with a significant number of retail business uses, which I would also submit we have. In order to support this, I had already submitted a statement to you all with some sections of the comprehensive plan that I felt like were applicable. However, when I went back and looked, I think that these sections may actually be better. Objective LU-1-3, it would be to encourage development to locate in areas with existing infrastructure and services before moving into less-developed areas of the county. I also thought that objective LU-2-2, which would protect the character of the historic or culturally important structures and neighborhoods through the use of historic districts, this property is clearly, it's on the register already. My client is in the process of renovating the interior of the property. We had a neighborhood meeting. I went by there at the beginning of the meeting, and there wasn't any place to sit. There's, I mean, everything's pretty well torn out at this point. I think you may have seen in one of the pictures, there's a dumpster, was a dumpster located in the driveway at the time that Brooke took photos. That has to do with the ongoing construction and renovation of the interior of the house. Here's another objective that I thought might be applicable. Encourage mixed-use developments where buildings and structures accommodate a variety of complementary and integrated uses in one area. I think that has to do with, you've got commercial behind us, across from us, various commercial zones in close proximity. You all will recall, from looking at the aerial, we are one block from Main Street and one block from First Street, so very close to the Main Street portion, where all the businesses and commercial properties are located in downtown LaGrange. And that's the end of what I have. We're looking for the waiver, obviously, on the parking. I feel like there's plenty of adequate on-street parking that is available with regard to the site. And if you think about Main Street itself, you know, there's a lot of parking on Main Street, but there's a lot of businesses on Main Street. And if you all were to enforce the zoning restrictions, if somebody came in and wanted to rezone something on Main Street, they're never gonna have enough parking if you strictly enforce that. And all of this is in walking distance. People are gonna be able to utilize the parking spaces, for example, in front of the courthouses they walk and shop in LaGrange. So that's why we don't think that the parking itself is much of a big deal. I'm gonna let Ms. Troutman just explain to you all briefly about what she's going to put in the property, what the proposed use is. I apologize, she was on her way to the gym when I called her. I got the notice, and I assumed that the notice got sent to her, but it actually got sent to me, and I forgot to tell her she needed to be here this morning at 9:00. So she dropped her dog off and came back.
Here I am, in all my glory.
So she's gonna, she can run around if you all need to.
I can, yes, I can work out. Thank you. I am Ally Troutman. I am asking for the rezoning for that property, and we're just gonna take it back to the Christmas house. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that, but that's the intention, as Linda had it many years ago.
All right, that's fine. We'll have an opportunity for questions here just shortly.
You got it.
But, Mr. Baxter, does that complete your application?
That does, sir. Thank you.
Okay, all right. With that, the application has been completed. I would like to ask, at this point, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of the application? Anyone to speak in support of? All right, I'll ask then, is there anyone here that would like to testify or have questions opposing the application? Don't think so, but I just wanted, need to ask. Seeing none, we'll now open it up for questions of the applicant from the commission. Commissioners, do you have questions? Ms. Finney?
On the proposed variance for parking, the.
It's a waiver.
The waiver. The three spaces that are there, there's no bypass ability, nor is there a pass-through ability. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
So basically, if one car is in there, everybody else gets blocked in, or somebody has to move, let somebody else out? It's not very?
I'm not sure I understand. Are you talking about in the driveway?
The ones in front of the house, five, six, and seven?
Yeah, I mean.
But I'm.
That's correct.
Yes, in other words, there's no bypass, there's no way to get around someone who has already parked there. There's no way to go on through. Everybody has to come back out the way they came in. So once there's, once there's a vehicle in parking spot five, basically, six and seven are locked in.
That's correct. There's no requirement that says that there has to be a bypass.
I understand. I'm just thinking of convenience for the customers in the store.
Mr. Finney, I would comment that I would assume the operator of the shop would be in space number seven. So that would not be an issue. And if there is an employee that is working there, they would probably be in space number six, which means that whoever parks in space number five, if they're actually shopping there, would, those people are gonna be stuck in the store anyway until the customers are all gone, would be my only thought. So in other words, the owner or the operator is in seven, and if there's somebody working there, so those spaces, you know, people are gonna drive to work anywhere.
Okay.
All right, any additional questions for the applicant? Additional questions? All right, seeing none. Mr. Baxter, do you have a final statement, sir?
Oh, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. With that, the, where we were first consider the zoning change, zoning map amendment application on docket PZ 16011, and I'll call on Mr. Urban and Mr. Combs to outline what's being requested on that particular docket.
Well, the first decision you have to make is recommendation to the LaGrange City Council regarding the zoning map amendment. You have, as always, in your packets, sample motions for either approval or denial. If you are going to consider recommending approval, there's a justification statement that was provided by the applicant. You should incorporate that into your decision, as well as testimony by the attorney for the applicant regarding additional compliance with the comprehensive plan, in particular LU 2-2 and LU 3-2, as he presented in the testimony. I found no binding elements regarding use of the property in this presentation, so.
Okay. Mr. Combs, anything that you need to add?
No.
All right. All right, commissioners, you've heard the outline from Mr. Urban on docket PZ 16011, which is a request for approval of a zoning map amendment on approximately 0.25 acres, and it is from R4 residential to CN Commercial Neighborhood District. That is the request. So do we have, at this point, a motion to, on the zoning map amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm Mr. Horton.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve the application, as presented by the applicant and the attorney. Number one, that it does comply, as they've adequately noticed here. LU 1-3, having to do with incentives for development and encouraging development, and the goal, LU 3, for economic development, which has to involve also increased tax revenue. And the LU 3-2 that he mentioned this morning, having to do with cultural and historical significance. I think there've been major and continuing economic changes in that particular area, and I think the zoning request in the application of CN Commercial Residential is more appropriate than the current zoning.
Okay, Mr. Combs, is that an adequate motion?
It is.
Okay, have a motion on the floor on docket PZ 16011, zoning map amendment from R4 to CN Commercial Neighborhood Districts. Do we have a second? Dr. Arvin, seconds. Now, do we have any discussion on the motion to approve the zoning map amendment request? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll ask Ms. Fox if she would take the vote on docket PZ 16011, zoning map amendment on C, from R4 to CN Commercial Neighborhood District. And this is a motion to approve. Ms. Fox?
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Faalvi?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Clingertus?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
All right, on docket PZ 16011, the zoning map amendment request from R4 to CN Commercial Neighborhood Districts has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. All right, with that, I'll now ask Mr. Urban to outline what's being requested on the development plan on docket PZ 16012.
The first decision you have to make is consideration of the waiver for the parking requirements. And again, you have a proposed motion and findings that you need to incorporate into your motion regarding the parking requirements. After that, then we'll look at the development plan, which is basically the existing building.
Okay, and Mr. Combs, anything else you need to add?
No, not on that.
All right, the chair would now entertain a motion on the waiver request on the docket PZ 16012. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move for approval of the waiver request, based on the fact that strict compliance with the regulations would create an undue hardship. This is a property that has operated in the same manner as requested, has proven over the years to be a unique retail destination, requiring no additional parking on-site. If parking were, if additional parking were constructed, we would lose green space and impose the, a parking lot in a neighborhood otherwise, in a neighborhood, something unwanted. And where else am I? The design innovations go to the use as was in the hands of the previous owner, and which is expected to continue in these hands. It's an unusual destination and unique, and is a destination sort for this, but over the years, again, it has not proven to have parking issues with this type of activity.
Okay, Mr. Combs, is that adequate?
That suffice.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the requested parking waiver. We have a motion on the floor to approve the requested parking waiver. The property is located 203 East Washington Street in La Grange. Do we have a second? Mr. Falvey, seconds? Okay, now, any discussion on the proposed waiver, parking waiver? Finney?
Yes, for Mr. Urban, is there a handicap parking requirement for this building under this use?
Because it's a historic property, it is somewhat exempt from ADA requirements, not only for parking and for access to the building.
Okay.
Historic structures are exempt.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the waiver? Seen no hands going up, we will now proceed to vote on the motion for a waiver of Section 280-070, the parking waiver. Ms. Fox, this is a motion to approve.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingefus?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
All right, on docket PZ 16012, the request for a parking waiver of Section 280-070 has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. And with that, the last request on this doctored item is the development plan, and Mr. Urban, again, ask you to outline if there's any conditions of approval that would be attached to this, or what our requirements are here.
Oh, again, it's a consideration of a motion to either approve or deny the development plan, and since it now complies with the requirements for parking because you granted a waiver, the only condition of approval would be that it just comply with today's presentation.
Okay. You've heard the outline from Mr. Urban. Now, the chair would entertain a motion on the development plan request on docket PZ 16012. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move for approval of the development plan, as I believe, based on testimony presented, that it complies with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, as noted and cited by applicant in their submission, including objective LU-1-3, LU-3, along with others referenced, the LU-2-2 and LU-3-2. Believe the existing classification for the property is more appropriate as applied for, and that is, again, based upon the changes in the immediate area and the zoning of properties assigned to that and the uses there, yeah.
Okay. Mr. King, Mr. Combs, is that adequate, sir?
It is.
All right. Have a motion on the floor to approve the development plan on docket PZ 16012. Do we have a second? Ms. Smith, seconds? Is there any discussion now on the approval of the development plan request? Any discussion? All right, seen none. I'll ask Ms. Fox again to take the vote on the motion to approve docket PZ 16012, the development plan. Ms. Fox?
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingefus?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
All right, the development plan on docket PZ 16012 has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. So thank you all very much. With that, commissioners, do you all need to take a recess for a minute, or do you want to continue on recess? Okay, let's take about a 10-minute recess.